...meeting of Commissioners Court of Grimes County. Would you join me in rise for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge? Father, we thank you for this day and the blessings of this life. Father, we pray for a number of folks in our county that are dealing with illness right now. We'd ask that you be with our Judge LaFlore as he recovers from surgery and a heart attack. Father, we ask that you be with him. With our Deputy David Cook, who's in the hospital. Father, we pray that he has a quick recovery from his illnesses and things that have been going wrong. Our county Judge Tuck McLean is in the hospital. Father, we ask that you be with the doctors that watch over him. And Father, we've had a ration of this lately, and Father, we just ask that you give us all patience and understanding as we work through these times. We pray for those that step up to the plate and fill the gap of those that were missing and continue the work of this county, and we're grateful for their energy and their efforts. Father, be with all of our first responders, be with our police officers, be with our deputies this week as we remember them in an awareness week. Father, we just ask that you help us to be mindful of why we are where we are at, and it's to serve. Keep us with energy, and Father, thank you for loving us so much, and it's in your son's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of the U.S. flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas flag.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Would you be seated, please? Are there any public comments that anyone would like to share with the court this morning? Seeing none, I'll fill the void. Please remember, we are in the middle of an election cycle that we believe is going to end next Tuesday. Early voting's opened the balance of this week, and Election Day throughout the county is next Tuesday, the 22nd. And it's my understanding, the two candidates that are running in that election, whoever said, who each have said if they do not win that runoff election, they will concede, and therefore, we should not have to have the next election in August, which would save us $10,000 to $12,000 in this county, which would be sorely needed. So anyway, if you haven't voted, please, go vote.
I'd like to announce the third annual First Responders Day is May 19th, this Saturday, from 10:00 to 2:00 downtown in Abesoda.
And the tug-of-war's gonna be at 1:30, so if you want to see who this year's champion's gonna be, stay for that entertainment. Thank you. Are there any other public announcements? Seeing no movement or hearing none, we will go to Consent Agenda Items Number Three and Number Four, Consider and Take Action to Approve Payroll, Consider and Take Action to Approve the Treasurer's List of Claims and Bills. We have had those in our possession. I move to approve Consent Agenda Items Three and Four as presented.
I second the motion.
There's a motion before the court from Commissioner Malick, there's a second by Commissioner Dobianski, to approve Consent Agenda Items Number Three and Four. No further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda Item Number Five, Grimes County Sheriff's Office. Lieutenant Caswell is not here, but he sent some ready replacements possibly. Okay. Consider and take action to approve items for public auction through Swyco Online Auction. We have a list of those items with attachment number five.
Judge, on that, the proceeds from the auction generally go back into the Sheriff's Department's machinery and equipment line, so I would like to make that part of this.
You say generally, and is that generally gonna happen in this instance also?
That's what they're requesting happen.
And all of these things, these items have been deemed not necessary for the operation of the Sheriff's Department, is that correct? You don't need that three-tub sink or anything?
If there's no further questions, I'd like to make the motion, we approve the items for public auction through Swyco Online Auction.
There's a motion before us, is there a second?
I second the motion.
There's a motion by Commissioner Walker, a second by Commissioner Dobianski, for Agenda Item Number Five. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Agenda Item Number Six, Discuss and Take Action to Approve the Grade Level for the Designated Representative for TCEQ Position, Attachment Number Six. Just a reminder of the court, this is the, where we had the resignation in the county of a department head. We combined two departments under one department head, but we still needed to fill the position with a designated representative, and we have put that designated representative, according to the job evaluation team, at a grade five, and that's noted on the salary structure. And the reason this is before the court at this time is because we've made an adjustment to that salary structure, that we have it as public information for all of our employees
If there are no questions, then I make the motion to approve the grade level for the Designated Representative for TCEQ Position, according to the attachment.
Okay. There's a motion before the court by Commissioner Walker for Agenda Item Number Six, a second by Commissioner Malick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Agenda Item Number Seven, Discuss and Take Action to Approve Proper Classification and Pay for Combined DH Department Head Position 911 and GIS Environmental Coordinator, and to remove the Environmental Coordinator Position from the Grimes County Salary Structure Grade Definitions, and that would be our attachment number seven. So again, this is in conjunction with what we just discussed, where we combined two departments into one, and we have eliminated the Environmental Coordinator and changed the title to 911 GIS Environmental Department Head, which is more descriptive of that position.
And that is the Department Head One, right?
That is correct, yes ma'am.
They were both in that position already, right? In that salary grade?
That's correct. Isn't that correct, this approach? Yes ma'am.
We just struck the environmental and eight, nine-one-one, a new name.
Correct. More appropriate to the now current position.
Then I'd like to make the motion to approve the proper classification and pay for, did we discuss pay? We're going according to the category? We're keeping the category the same, right?
The category's the same. Was there a recommendation for an increase or maintain the same? Do you recall?
There was a recommendation.
Okay.
Okay.
And do you recall how much that was?
That was not discussed because you can't discuss that in the salary structure.
Okay. For the individual?
Right.
And we keep that a secret throughout the county, right?
Don't.
It doesn't fit my tone. Okay. That could be addressed for the next budget, I guess.
You know, if y'all pre-own a pay, then that's something, as the Commissioners Court, y'all need to decide what her pay will be, and then fill out a change of status form and give it to Ms. Pro.
Okay. Now, would that be within this current budget period, or would it have to wait until the new budget?
We could do it within this budget period because of the cost savings by eliminating one department head and the remaining.
Because the other D R is not being paid here as much as the department head was, so there is money available, and I would be glad to work up what's available.
We don't need to consume the full amount, but whatever we feel would be appropriate for this department head now overseeing and having a larger area of responsibility.
Okay. Well, I thought we were at a negative when we last had the handout from Jesse.
I haven't looked at the...
Maybe we need to bring that portion back.
We can.
Okay.
Commissioner?
Is she currently exercising these responsibilities at this time?
She is.
And her pay is commensurate with her prior position?
It is. That's why we are considering an increase in, at the current time. She was a backup for Marissa, anyway.
Right. But, well, we talked about doing it, we were using what was currently in the budget, and so we may need to look at that again because of the handout.
Part of that was, we were taking the part-time person to the full-time position. All right, well, we...
We'll revisit that. That would be good. And then she'll be back. She's out at a conference with, in emergency management.
Right, in San Antonio.
She's also at emergency management. So I think we need to look at that. So I'll just make the motion to approve the proper classification for Combined DH Position 911 GSI Environmental Coordinator, and to remove Environmental Coordinator Position from the Grimes County Salary Structure Grade Definition, according to technical seven.
And for procedural, let me take a vote. Is there any further discussion on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Who seconded that motion?
That was Commissioner Dobianski. Mr. Foltz?
Yes, Judge.
Procedurally, and also, Mary, since we've made the modification to the department head title, we have the classification, if we make a salary adjustment according to her responsibilities and duties, and the money is already budgeted, does that need to come back before the court, or is that just a paperwork exercise?
No, it'll be either a line-out or transfer or budget amendment, so it would need to come back before.
Okay.
And I didn't say this in your handling, however you want to, but I would assume that your evaluations are coming up shortly because the budget year is going to begin, and so you may want to combine this assessment, having the person in front of you, and you may want to go ahead and conduct the evaluation, though it may have been planned for a month or two down the road, you may want to just do it now, and you may want to take input as to what that person believes the appropriate pay is. It doesn't mean you have to grant what somebody says it is, but certainly would be, I think, an opportunity for you to evaluate what's been done over the last year, what the person thinks about the new position, and what the person thinks the pay for that position might ought to be.
And that would be done before the court, but that would be done in executive session.
You could certainly close it for personnel matters, that's correct.
Thank you for your advice.
You bet.
Thank you, Mary. All right, let's go to Agenda Item Number Eight. County Attorney John C. Foltz, Consider and Take Action to Modify the Lease Agreement by and between Grimes County and Pinnacle Towers Acquisition LLC regarding the Radio Communications Tower at the Law Enforcement Center, Attachment Number Eleven.
That's the number eight.
Number eight. Excuse me. That's LLC, LLC, right?
Yeah, I think it's, it was intended to be LLC, not a big deal. So let me try quickly to cover some of the history. The property over there at the Law Enforcement Center was acquired in 1994. The Sheriff's Office was built in the late 90s. In 2001, the original lease for the tower was signed, and it was with an entity by the name of Schaefer or Schaefer Tower Services, and it was for a period of 25 years with automatic renewals for up to five renewal periods of five years each. In 2004, there was a renewal or a lease signed with the tenant now being Pinnacle Towers Acquisition LLC, was assigned from Schaefer to Pinnacle. There was some additional sublease, I guess, signed in 2004, not really of significant to our discussion today. In 2005, there was modification in memorandum of lease that was signed, the tenant was Pinnacle, and then in 2005, Pinnacle signed a lease for GT Mobile Net to have certain receivers on the tower. All to say that between the original construction of the tower in 2001 and today, the tower's ownership has changed hands several times. It's on the premises of the county. There's an original lease, there were modifications signed. The original lease and modifications were signed by the position that was, the person that was in the position, equivalent to Dave Lilly's position today as Emergency Management Coordinator. Why the Commissioners Court or the county as a whole thought it was appropriate to have that person signing off on the lease for something that had impact to the county premises, I don't know. It was probably just because he was the guy that was willing to take the pen and sign his name to the lease that was proposed. That's why we have this issue, if you're dealing with money, you're dealing with things, certainly that are going to be contracts that exist over a year, we oftentimes want to have the Commissioners weigh in versus saying that to elected officials, we give you carte blanche, the ability to sign off on anything that you may want to, because it certainly may impact future budget years. And what a vendor could do is come into an office and have anybody in that office sign a document and attempt to bind the county. That's why, when you have multi-years, I saw that when I took office, that there were contracts that were signed by the Secretary of my office, some for multi-year deals, as I recall, it may have either been for a copy, or it may have been for legal research materials online, but obviously, you don't want that to be the circumstance. You want folks that are in charge of county premises to be either signing off as the Commissioners Court as a whole, or intentionally delegating that authority to one or more people that are in a better place or better suited to determine what's appropriate for the county. All that to say, several years ago, three, geez, three or four, I guess now, there was an issue that the owner of the tower wanted to permit there to be lines installed by trenching in the premises of the Law Enforcement Center, and I was made aware through the Sheriff's Office that someone who had a sublease from the tower owner to install a receiver and then to install a line, to run the line across the ground of the premises, was installing the line along the road. If you've ever been back there, the dirt road that is behind the Law Enforcement Center. The Sheriff's Office had concerns about it because nobody knew by what authority they were installing those lines, and with the various iterations of the lease, one modification, a second modification, an assignment from one entity to another, there was some lack of clarity as to what the lease actually provided for. And there was a discussion at some point, from one iteration to another, there was an attachment that said, "We're creating a utility easement." But in my mind, utility is power maybe to run the tower and put lights on the tower, something to that effect, but it's not utility where anybody who installs a receiver on the tower can stick their line out to the road or to, you know, any other location, across any direction they wanted to, or now calling this a utility corridor and saying, "We're gonna stick our lines in this utility corridor." In my mind, utility meant power to run the tower, not 50 people on the tower can stick their lines in this easement down our dirt road. The problem, or the biggest problem, as far as I'm concerned, is, especially when you're dealing with fiber optic lines, that if we had these lines that were running across the county premises, and we didn't have a great handle on where they were, if we've got a blade out there, you know, that's out there maintaining our dirt road, or we decide to do some trenching or excavating or what have you, and we don't know exactly where these lines are, there's a decent chance we're gonna break one of these lines, and then there's a question of who's responsible, whose liability is that? We certainly may have some immunity, but I, it caused me concern, I talked to Roddenridge at that point, they had concerns, they didn't know where the lines were. We were at that point dealing with the school district getting internet capabilities, and so we were looking at installing a line for that purpose, and Commissioners Court agreed that the best solution was probably to develop a particular easement that's, I think, 20 feet in width, that runs from the tower directly over to, I think it's the West Fence Line, and then south to connect to Hill Street. But that gets you off the property as fast as possible, and so now we've confined that in an easement that we had a survey or draw-up, and we granted that specific easement and said, "That's the easement by which we're gonna give folks in the future the ability to run their lines off of the tower." Problem there, of course, is it doesn't resolve, doesn't resolve the issue of the lines that have already been stolen along the road. But therein lies the reason why we began to undertake a revision of this lease that had multiple iterations. So I talked with the tower folks, they talked about maybe let's do an amendment. I said, "Man, I can't even read, I don't know where we stand today under these various modifications," because at one point, as I said, that utility easement just showed up as an exhibit to the lease, but there was no description in the lease as to what the utility easement meant, or was for, or who could use it, or what a utility was. So, and it was just, you know, patchwork is what it amounts to, multiple years in patchwork, and people were, I assume, doing the best that they could, but then you had the Emergency Management Coordinator signing off on a, you know, binding document, a legal document, and I don't know that the court ever reviewed it. So I got with, talked with the rep of the tower entity, and we began to draft a revision to incorporate all of the modifications that had taken place over a number of years. They drafted something, I looked at it, made revision, sent it back to them, they made notes and comments or revisions, sent it back to me. It's gone through that process several times, each time, it would oftentimes sit in my office for multiple months, trying to give an opportunity for the Sheriff's Office, as well as members of the Commissioners Court, to take a look at it, as well as any IT staff that we had who were on board at that time, to take a look at it. They would sit on it for typically twice as long as I sat on it, and so we have now been through a year or two of that process of sending it back and forth. And to be honest with you, when I haven't seen something in six months or whatever, it's as though I've never seen it before oftentimes. So when it would come back to me, was relearning what we had done previously. Intention, of course, is to get one document that incorporates all the changes that have been made over the years, but now look at it from a perspective of moving forward and what are gonna be the needs of the county moving forward, and do we need additional receiver space? Because part of the agreement is that we are permitted, they pay us no rent for having that tower up there, but in exchange, we're entitled to space. And we can put receivers up there, or put antenna, or 10A, 10A on there if we want to. And to this point, we have done that, and it's ever been clear to me, I can go stand and look at that thing, and then I can ask IT guy, the sheriff's guy, "How many do we have up there, and what do they do?" And every time, within hours, I've forgotten. So Todd's not here, and I'm gonna ask ultimately that we consider punting this, to have Todd here to be sure that we've provided every desire, provided for every desire that the Sheriff's Office has for space. I'm told, of course, with technology being what it is, that, you know, it may be at some point that the tower's not necessary, and it may be that we don't need as much space as we, as we thought just months ago with Shane's advice, you know, and now we have Greg's advice, it tells us maybe, it may be something different. We want as much space, I think, to provide the possibility as we can get from it, and I think we've asked for three additional spaces, and we originally had an agreement that, I think, we were only entitled to one more space, and that is if we took the City of Anderson spot, because the City of Anderson, under the original lease, was supposed to be given a spot. All that to say, you now have in front of you, and I know the judge has seen this before, and Commissioner Dobianski has seen this before, I don't know if the three of you, the other three of you have seen this before, but you now have it in front of you with the notes that were sent from the tower entity, and I wanted to be sure that there was adequate time for the members that haven't seen this to make comment about whether or not you have concerns. I still have a concern about utility. We haven't really said what a utility is. They have a, they have a definition in there, but to me, it's not clean enough, but it still talks about power, and doesn't necessarily say, "For all of their sublesses, they can install a receiver and then have a line that runs across our property." I want to be sure that we give a good definition for utility, and we confine those lines to the easement that we have created, that is, runs 90 degrees essentially off of the property line, to get those things out of here as fast as possible, so we'll try to avoid the circumstance where we may hit them with excavation or maintenance of the road. All to say, I'm asking that you punt this, and that you all take a serious look at it, and if you have questions about it, go over there, take a look at it, you know, binoculars or whatever you want to do, don't climb it. As your legal counsel, I'd say, "Don't climb it."
Don't dig around it.
Yeah, don't dig around it. But talk with Todd, if you want, talk with Greg if you want, we need to have an idea of what it is that we need. These folks have been receptive to the things that we have requested. Just know that they have the original lease form, and I think you have this in front of you, and Corey can correct me if I'm wrong, but there's a lease form that is the lease between the county and the tower folks. Then there is a second form, which is what the tower folks typically use for their sublesses, and it says what they can and can't do, and who will install and who won't install, and what insurance is required. They have indicated in the primary lease with us that they want us to fill out one of those for the various receivers that we may put up on the tower. So to the degree you see any issues in any of those documents that cause you some concern about our obligation or our rights, we need to speak up now before we execute this thing. I think they're gonna be amenable to modifications in the future if we need to refine this thing, so I'm not gonna say it's once and for all, but this is a chance to take what we got originally in 2001 and clean it up for 2018 moving forward, and I want to be sure that we have everything in there that anybody who's a county rep now identifies is appropriate and necessary for those two agreements. I'll shut up.
I think a couple of years ago, the Sheriff's Office needed some more space on there, and we waited and waited and waited and waited for months before, and I don't know if they ever heard anything about that.
There was, there's been an ongoing discussion for two or, two or three years, I want to say, over this revision of this lease, and they, being, Pinnacle has never denied us a spot, that I know of. And so it's been an issue of, to be honest with you, it's been an issue of the two attorneys, I think Joe's an attorney, right?
No, he's the real estate specialist, he's on time.
It's been, at some point, so Joe Vingle is the guy's name, super, super nice guy, and he's come to Grimes County multiple occasions, I don't know where his office is, San Antonio, oh, Houston. They've actually, on occasion, I think, brought lawyers in, brought engineers in, sat down with us and said, "What is it that you want?" On occasion, it's appeared as though it was gonna be adversarial, and then at the end of the meeting, we recognized that we're all on the same page, there's no real fight here, it's just a matter of reducing our agreement to writing. And like lawyers do, we just muddy the waters horribly all the time. But Joe has had to send it up to his lawyers, and that's really why it's taken twice as long any time it's been up in his hands, is he's had to send it to his lawyers for consideration or review, and then you, I think you have the draft that has their notes out in the margin, their comments to my previous revisions. So to answer that question specifically, I don't know that we've ever not gotten a receiver on there that we wanted, but there has been the issue, you guys have any comment about that? I'll say, I'll take it as a no, just shaking of your heads.
I think we wanted it for the future needs, I don't think there was ever anything...
We redirected one, or we were wanting to redirect one that was on the tower, and we wanted to... and we wanted to add one to the tower, was my understanding.
Well, I did, I'm gonna tell you that I've heard from multiple people, various understandings, and when you're talking with uh, IT guys, you know, trying to get, trying to know for sure the difference between the apparatus that is out there, the receiver and what it does, and the antenna and what it does, uh, I think I've intentionally had a mental block about it, and I'm not, I'm not, I don't have a great awareness of what we have, or what people think we need, and what uh, technology is going to allow us not to have to demand. Uh, and so to this point, my understanding is we've always got, we've been able to secure, obtain everything we wanted. One of the issues is, we were claiming that they installed lines improperly. They didn't have authority to do that, and we were, you know, frustrated with that because it's gonna impact our ability to maintain our property. They responded with, "Well, you can be upset about that and we'll address that, but don't get too uppity because you guys have put things on the tower that you didn't have permission to put on the tower." So, I think we've been able to put everything we wanted on the tower to this point. At least their assertion has been that we've done it without their permission, some of the things. Uh, all to say, this is a discussion that's bigger than I am, I'm just the guy that's trying to reduce the writing. Uh, so if it's policy, uh, you all need to take a hard look at it and make sure that you're okay with the policy of it. I'll be happy to answer any questions on the legality of it, or make our rights uh, you know, more enforceable or more significant, or consider what rights we do and don't have, or what obligations we have. But I, I don't want you to have the perception that this is Fultz's project to take off and run and say, "What's best for the county as far as the tower lease," because it's, it involves policy. I mean, that's, you're, you are my client in that circumstance, and I'm here to give legal advice, but I'm not here to take and run and say, "What's the best, uh, what are the best ways we can structure for what the county needs."
In your opinion, step one, two, three, what do we need to do to agree and then sign off on this? And the reason I ask, I believe this is the third time I've read through the contract,
Yeah.
and where you say, it's like starting over, it is starting over for me, and every time I read it, it doesn't get any clearer.
Right. Well, here's, here's what I would propose. All of you go look at the tower individually. Don't have, don't have a meeting without posting a notice, but go out there and take a look at it. Uh, if you have any questions about how things can be, or what it is the county needs, et cetera, talk with Todd and/or Greg, find out those things. Then if you have questions about the agreement, I'm assuming probably step point five is, read the agreement, all right? I didn't think, didn't think to say that, but read the agreement, look at the tower, talk to the folks. Then for me, and then based upon your understanding of what it is we have, what it is we need, and where we're headed, if you have any legal questions, either come see me, or just send me an email with your questions. And then let's put it back on agenda and have this discussion of with Greg, if you want Greg here, with Todd, if you want Todd here, with me, if you want me here, and let's hammer it out and figure out if we got any questions. It's a close to final form, I'm not gonna say this needs a total overhaul. I just, I wanna be sure that we don't do what we did in the past, and that is have Dave Lilly look at the, look at the agreement and sign off on it. I mean, that's just not Dave's spot, and he didn't, he's not, it's out of his lane.
So, who, who will make the supposed to be final draft? Would that be, uh, Grimes County, or would be Crown Castle?
Well, this is almost final, and those comments that you see out there came to me, and I was to make a response to those, and I huddled again with uh, Todd and Greg and Commissioner Dobianski, and I think you came to the last huddle, and said, "Are we getting everything that we want in here? Is this addressed all of our needs in the future? Is it addressing the issue of where to put the, the lines that their sub lesses may install? Is it addressing all of those things in the way that you, as county reps, sheriff's office, because uh, they're out there essentially maintaining the premises now, I mean, Roddenbridge maintains the road, but um, until unless this other facility's built, I mean, it's primarily the sheriff's office that's maintaining the facility, the acreage out there. Um, so they need to be involved, IT needs to tell us what we may need in the future, and we need to, you know, attempt to get that, or secure that position uh, now. And then you all, with your own brains and your own ideas, your own backgrounds and your own education, you say, "Hey, I, I think, what about this, and what about that, and we can do this, that, and the other." If you have those ideas, now's the time to speak up.
Uh, I do have a question.
Sure.
Okay, it's referencing uh, Schedule 3A quite a bit, but 3A looks like it's completely um, marked out. So, did this agreement take the place of 3A? Everything in blue, Schedule 3A?
I'm looking for Schedule 3A.
It's all the way to the back.
Right, that's the uh, when they sign, when they have a third party use the tower, because they own the tower, and they're, we're essentially their landlord, uh, but, and they would have to pay us rent in a usual circumstance, but the rent is that they will provide us free space. This is the agreement that they typically use for their sub lesses, people that are gonna install on their tower. I think the reason that it was struck out is it didn't apply to the county, it doesn't apply to us. I think that was the reason that that agreement was struck out, if I'm not mistaken. It does, it's still, they're going to use it, I think there's a reference in there that we were supposed to fill out their form, and I think we said, "We don't wanna fill out your stinking form." And so I think maybe that's how it got struck. I, I don't know where we left off, though, they're gonna make us fill out something, say it again.
That's the second agreement, it's the license agreement for our lease on the tower, that we just got expressed.
Say it again. Schedule 3A is what?
No, Schedule 3A, I believe, was removed because they sent us the separate agreement, the license agreement.
Okay. So, they sent us a license agreement that applied specifically to us?
Not for us to use their form.
Yeah, that, not for us to use their form, right.
Okay, so I'll ask you afterwards to, why it's referenced so many times in like the mutual waiver of default and, and then on rent, it's still referring to that agreement?
I think it's gonna be replaced, is the point. Replace it with the, with a different agreement that is not the same that they have. This says, uh, I don't know if you're on, maybe looking at page two.
I am.
The first time that there's a reference to the tower site license, says Schedule 3A attached here to the short form tower site license agreement, and then short form is struck? Because I think that we're intending to put a separate license agreement, not the one that is in there now.
Okay.
So, the one that's in there now still has that title, short form.
Okay, so, but this is the other license agreement?
There, and there should be a license agreement at 3A, you're right, you're right. And I don't know why it's not there.
The fiber ring, fiber ring that's coming through with BB fog, uh, has that been taken into consideration in this?
Yes. But Greg was at the table after the meeting we had a month ago, or whatever that was, and there was discussion about that. But uh, it's all beyond me, so.
We stand at the bottom, additional three antennas to the tower.
So, John, could we ask them to move the lines that are currently in, in danger?
It, it could go as far as, dare I say, litigation, where we could say, "Move your lines because you never had authority, you breached the lease." Their response, when we've made comments that weren't as threatening, let's say, has been, "Well, I look at, I look at the lease and I see what you're saying now, Fultz. We had a utility easement that just got attached as a diagram, and there's nothing in the body that says who gets to use the utility easement, or what a utility easement is, or what a utility is." Um, but our response to that is, you may have breached the lease yourself because you put things on the tower that you didn't have permission to put on the tower. Uh, so could we, yes. Um, could we ask them to move those things, yes. I suspect what would happen is their sub lesses would have to move their lines. Uh, and it's, you know, they're, our, it's our premises, and if there was ever a deal that that's where they were to install those things, we could do that. I don't know it's, that it's a huge issue, and to be just absolutely honest with you, I don't know how many lines are in there. Uh, maybe one or two or three, or maybe ten, I, I think it's less than five, though.
Yeah, I think it was like one.
Well, if, if we're not in the position to ask them to move the lines, is there a, is there some way we can ask them at a minimum just to mark the lines that they know exist?
Sure, and the lease says from now on, anything in the future will be in that other easement, but yeah, there's nothing, there's nothing unreasonable about that at all. Uh, I, I would assume, I, I would hope that uh, the folks who installed their lines would have a way of finding their lines without having to dig them up, to then mark them. All right, but how can you, if it's, if it's fiber optic, is there something you can do on service to find fiber optic in the ground? That's beyond me.
I don't know a whole lot about fiber optic, but what I understand is if you cut a fiber optic line, it's, it's fairly expensive.
Right.
And there are some liabilities associated with that, and I would hate to see one of our employees out there doing what they were supposed to be doing, which is maintaining the property, inadvertently cut one of those lines like you mentioned, and then who's gonna pay for it?
Right.
Or what are we gonna do?
Right, I don't disagree with that. I, I think our position would be, you put it in place, and we didn't know it was there, it wasn't supposed to be there, and so, not our fault, but we'd, we'd like to avoid it if at all possible, sure. So, I've taken up a lot of time, and I ask you to table this.
If there's no further discussion, I move that we table the action to modify the lease agreement between, by and between Grimes County and Pinnacle Towers Acquisition LLC regarding the radio communications tower at the Law Enforcement Center.
There's a motion before the court by Commissioner Dobianski, seconded by Commissioner Walker, on agenda item number eight, to table. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Agenda item number nine, considering take action regarding cause number twenty-nine, comma, four ninety-two, Grimes County, Texas versus Charles W. Cook in the twelfth Judicial District Court of Grimes County, Texas. It is expected that the court will convene a closed session or executive session regarding this item as authorized by section five-five-one, point oh-seven-one of the Texas Government Code, consultation with attorney. And we will go into.
Before you do that, Judge, could I um, put on the table what this is about? Um, and let me start by saying, apparently the rumors of Mr. Cook's demise were exaggerated. Uh, he is here today, uh, and.
I've heard the lawsuit, that's the first time over, that?
If, if he uh, if he wants to stand at the podium, or even from his chair, tell the court what he's asking for, I think that would be appropriate. What, essentially, we have a pending lawsuit, county against Mr. Cook. Um, and it's been pending for a long time, and I, I'll get to the reasoning for that in a second. But it's my understanding that Mr. Cook is asking that due to recent developments, uh, that the case potentially go away. And I'm willing to uh, have that discussion with you all, certainly in closed session, about uh, the impact of that and whether it's appropriate. But I think this matter got here because Mr. Cook approached Commissioner Dobianski and said, um, "Given the recent developments, can we do something about this case?" Uh, and I like to think of myself as a reasonable lawyer, and I would certainly say to the court that if it makes sense to you, that oftentimes, uh, it is appropriate to make cases go away. I can't tell you that until we have the, the full discussion, but because this was initiated as a request from Mr. Cook, you may want to hear that information from him, uh, and it is not appropriate to bring in an adversary into a closed session. So, you can't bring him into a closed session. So, if you wanna hear from him, it needs to be now, or you can do it after we have our discussion in closed session. I'll leave that to you, but I've had this comment or suggestion to all of the members of the court, I think, at different times. You all have the opportunity to be proactive and pursue things that you think are beneficial to the county, and bring it, stick it on the agenda and say, "Court, I need you to consider this. I found a business that wants to come to the county, or I found this or that, or whatever it may be." Or you, and/or, uh, you can sit and be reactive uh, to those things that other people request of you. Uh, I think there's some balance between the two. But in my opinion, this is one of those things that's a request that's come to the Commissioners Court. If somebody asks you to consider a resolution that says, "We want to declare, you know, May Phillip Cox Month", you may say, "Get out of here, you're a nutcase, we don't wanna have this on the agenda." Uh, you may say, "Yes," but it's up to you to decide, somebody's a gatekeeper, what gets on the agenda and what does not. Um, you don't have to put every request on the agenda. This one came to me from a commissioner, which came to him, uh, and that request came from Mr. Cook. And so, I asked that it be put on the agenda for our discussion purposes, but if you're wanting to find out how it originated and why it's on your agenda, uh, more than just me making a request, uh, you may wanna have Mr. Cook weigh in at this point and have him give you the facts as he knows them and what his request is, before we go talking about how to respond to his request.
Commissioner Dobianski, you obviously have some background on this.
Yes.
Would it be beneficial to the court, do you think, to have Mr. Cook address the court?
Sure.
Mr. Cook, would you like to address the court?
Well.
From where you're at is just fine, sir.
I wish I would have verbatim since Charlie has.
But we don't have that much time, sir.
This is supposed to be our five-minute meeting, right?
But this, this lawsuit was filed to uh, stop me from proceeding with the subdivision. And as y'all know now, this uh, two forty-nine is coming out across there. It's cutting across the back of, of my subdivision, which is gonna make doing that subdivision, uh, I think in the past, I don't wanna do it anymore. There was private roads, a private subdivision, now it's gotten into a whole different realm. And John doesn't like private roads and subdivision, private subdivisions. We've heard longer heads about all of that, and a number of things, which I won't go into all that.
Sure.
We've been doing that for a week, even John could talk about it for two weeks. But uh, I don't know what to say, other than the fact that, that I don't know what the lawsuit has any relevance anymore about, except it's on the books.
Yes, sir.
And one provision, and it was that I can't sell any property. Well, I don't wanna sell any property, so, except that I may wanna sell the whole thing, or, or do a completely different type subdivision, which if I did divide it and did do a subdivision, it would be a completely different uh, subdivision altogether. So, I, I guess what, what I would, what I would like is, is I don't see what the lawsuit has anything to do with anything anymore. And then two, I wanna, to withdraw my, my request for the subdivision now. This, this has an equivalentary plat on it, because I don't wanna do that anymore.
Yes. What was the name of your subdivision going to be?
Uh, Deer Creek.
Deer Creek?
No, no, but, so this one's like Tierra Buena.
Yeah, Tierra Buena North. There's a Tierra, there's a Tierra Buena South, and this would have been Tierra Buena North.
Section two.
Section two.
Right.
Uh, and so I, just to give a little, and while Mr. Cook is here, I may, you may need to ask me a question based upon information I have, and I have a phone board with this on it, and I don't know why I didn't think to bring it. Um, but he has or had a tract of property with hundreds of something acres total, and there was an issue of selling off tracts within that hundred and something acres. And uh, question arose whether he fell within the subdivision regulations. There was a disagreement about whether he did or did not, county felt as though he did, and I know Mr. Cook wants, wants to blame me, but it was a court decision.
I won't blame you for anything.
Yeah, uh, so, and if, if you hadn't gathered, I, I actually have, uh, I like Charlie, uh, but I always know exactly how far away to keep Charlie. And uh, when Charlie's looking out for Charlie's interests and not the county's interest. Uh, so, point being is, he had a large tract, and he had begun to sell off uh, smaller tracts within that tract. When we were made aware of that, the county said, "This is an illegal subdivision", and filed suit and sought an injunction. We had a hearing, his attorney was Marvin Longbaugh, who's since passed away, and the district judge granted an injunction that said, "Mr. Cook couldn't sell any more lots within that tract, or any more tracts within the larger tract." One tract, which appeared to be within that tract, was actually a separate tract for forty acres, forty acres. Um, Blair Rotten's tract. Uh, so it was never actually part of this, although he kinda combined those things. As I understand it, Mr. Rotten still owns his tract, so it's really not an issue as far as the subdivision's concerned, but he was going to lay out a road that got Mr. Rotten access to his forty acres, which was just a. Rotten access to his forty acres, which was just adjacent to this other tract. There were tracts within, though, there, within his larger tract, hundred and, what's the total acres, Charlie, a hundred and fifty?
Oh, it was two fifty.
Oh, two fifty. So within the two fifty, there were one or two, uh, tracts that Mr. Cook sold before we became aware of it, and that's when the suit got filed. The road that was to run through the property was built by Mr. Cook. There were real concerns that the county didn't know whether the base was sufficient, whether it had been stabilized, uh, what amount of, um, surface there was, and I think most people agreed, and, and I'm not asking Charlie to make any comment here, but I think most people agreed that it wasn't up to county specification. And that was the primary rub, is that you were gonna have a division of tracts, and selling off to folks who in the future would complain, just like the complaints you have received from tracts in the north end, they would say, "Hey, when I got here, the road looked okay, and I thought this was a county road, and now it's falling apart on me, and county, it's gotta be your fault." Well, it would never have been brought to county spec because we never had a chance to do core samples. We never had a chance for Dave Lilly or anybody else go out there and take a look at it, to see if it was brought up to county spec. Additionally, it had a turn that went across the body of water that, uh, as I understood it, violated the radio requirements. It was too tight a turn for emergency vehicles. Well, turns out that as we're proceeding on with our dispute, that we find out that it looks like, lo and behold, two forty-nine's gonna cut this road in half. The road runs north and south, up and down, two forty-nine's gonna cut it like that, almost exactly where that body of water is, where that complaint was about the drainage structure. I think there was a question of whether it was sufficient drainage, um, I don't know if anybody did a hydrology study to say whether the water, that would, whatever that drainage structure was, was, would allow sufficient water to pass underneath the road without it draining the road, uh, or flooding the road. Um, and so, turns out, two forty-nine's gonna cut the road that Mr. Cook built pretty much in half. Uh, it's also gonna have real impact on the tracts that he sold off. So my understanding is, and Mr. Cook can correct me if I'm wrong, that the tracts that were within the two fifty, not the Rotten tract that was just adjacent, was always a separate track, looked like it could be part of that, uh, and may have had access, uh, developed through that, was never a, a part that he divided the two fifty into. It was always a separate track. Um, the two that he sold, I think it was two within the two fifty, uh, have now been conveyed back to Mr. Cook. Uh, those folks, I think, and I don't know that I had a conversation with them, though I may have, uh, they may have gotten upset about two forty-nine, they may have gotten upset about the lawsuit involving the county, they may have just said, you know, "We want out," and Mr. Cook said, "I'll, I'll take you out for whatever you pay." I don't know exactly what transpired, but I suspect it's one or more of those reasons that they conveyed back to Mr. Cook. Now, if that's, and there may be, is there still one guy that had, had ownership?
There's one.
Okay, so there may have been two or three, and, uh, maybe two out of the three conveyed back. There's still one tract within the two fifty that is not owned by Mr. Cook. The question that you're gonna face, and we can do a closed session, that's not really, uh, asking me for legal advice, I'm just to kinda give them the facts to tell you how we got here. The, uh, one, the current rules say you can divide a tract into two pieces, and as long as one of them is over five acres, you don't trigger the subdivision regs. You recall, we saw this time and again, mom and pop wanted to divide their tract into two pieces, and the court was granting a variance almost every time. And I said to the court, "Seems like it's the rule, not the exception, and if it is, we need to change the rules." And, uh, Commissioner Krieger at that time said, "Yeah, that, we need to do that." And so, uh, we, the court did make that change to say, "If you're only dividing one piece into two, and at least one of them is over five acres, you don't need a plat." Well, that would fit, I think, where the two hundred and fifty acres is now. Uh, that's, that, that's probably the conclusion that we would all arrive at. But that wasn't the rule when Mr. Cook originally did this. And it certainly wasn't, uh, there wasn't a rule that allowed him to divide into two or three or four pieces, uh, without a plat. Mr. Cook and I had a debate, and, and through his counsel, we had a debate about if there was a pig trail down the middle of a property, and you then cut up the property into four pieces, and they now are gonna have access along what used to be a pig trail, do you have to plat, or did that pig trail already exist such that you haven't technically laid it out for the first time, when you're conveying those pieces off? Well, the statute, two thirty-two, chapter two thirty-two's pretty damn clear. When you segregate that property, which is where that road is going to be, for the benefit of those landowners that you're gonna sell to, which only happens when you subdivide, that that triggers the subdivision regulations. Mr. Cook has always disagreed with me about whether that was the case. The district court actually agreed with us, and that's why he couldn't sell any more tracts. Point being is, if he has a piece of property that we look at today, that might be in conformity, uh, with, uh, the exception to our rules today, such that he wouldn't have to plat if he did, if all of his conduct, if we look at the ground and what, what exists now, if all of that to get there was done today, he probably would be an exception to the subdivision regs. That would, though, require you to overlook what had been done in the past, and say, uh, "He violated the rules," or "We believe he violated the rules at some point in the past." And if, I'll liken it to this, if somebody steals something out of a purse, uh, and then changes their, their mind later, a week later, and returns it, does that negate that a theft occurred? No, the theft, the, the intention of the theft was to permanently deprive at the moment. Just 'cause you had a change of heart doesn't mean that it wasn't a theft, and that you don't necessarily get charged with it. Now, I'm not saying Charlie's going around swiping stuff out of a purse, I'm saying to you, "Are you gonna overlook the conduct of the past?" And that's ultimately the court's decision that's before the court, but we can go in a closed session and talk about it, but those are the details of how we got here. Mr. Cook is saying, "I don't like having my, my property frozen, I'd like to be able to sell," and he's representing to us today, I think, that he's gonna sell it in a big chunk, uh, or at least he liked the lawsuit to, the looming lawsuit that's been out there for years, to go away. Uh, if we did that, and then he turned around and started selling off tracts, we'd have to file a suit again. Um, if you overlooked where we, what, everything's happened to the past, you overlooked the resources of my office to get to the courthouse and, and get an injunction in favor of the county. Of course, you know, I'm, I'm on staff, so it's not necessarily additional time, uh, it's just taking time away from, let's say, answering your questions, or answering somebody else's question on some other issue. So, um, I think that's where we are. I'll be happy to answer the questions you have, go in a closed session, whatever you think is appropriate, but at the end of the day, I think you're being asked to make a determination of whether to non-suit this case, and, uh, tell Mr. Cook that you recognize that, uh, he would meet the exception today, and there's no need to continue the suit because the suit was based upon his violation of the subdivision regs by cutting his property up into more than two pieces. Actually, at that time, even two pieces would've triggered the rules. Um, the primary issue, though, as I pointed out to you, was the road. We were never given the opportunity to inspect the road, determine whether it met county spec. Uh, once, once we did have that opportunity, after it had been constructed, there was a real issue about the turn across the, the drainage structure. Uh, those issues may go away with two forty-nine cutting this in half, and ultimately, if he doesn't choose to subdivide those properties, uh, any further, only the one tract that remains owned by somebody else, uh, might be at issue. Uh, Rotten's property may be at issue, but effectively, Rotten has a private easement across, uh, Mr. Cook's property, so not really an issue of the county's, to be honest with you. So, I'll shut up.
May I ask Mr. Cook a question?
May I be clarified some, um, just few things? This is only an extension of a subdivision exactly like this that was done previously. And so, I didn't go steal it out of purse, it was something I was contingent to, and we've been, had problems with, with all of them forever. But anyway, John has his ideas, and I admire, that's why we have, what we have. And, so anyway, that's, that's not, there was as far as the issue about the, about the, of a person that's still there, they're gonna be on this, on the road, on the new road. They don't wanna go back through there, down what John calls a pig trail. And that pig trails, the old roads through there, I don't know if any of you know anything about the history out there, but up until the last few years, that's all there was in southern Grimes County. When I came out here, three oh two wasn't even there, and all we had was, was roads and John calls pig trails. Well, I, I'll be too, but that's all we had.
Right.
And we used them for years, years. There was an old house back there, a sub, two or three houses back there, in fact. But anyway, that gets into back on this, I've been lost into something that really doesn't matter now because it's moot point. I'm not gonna subdivide it, you know, into eleven acre tracts. And on the road business, John had concerns about what happened up north. In my deal, there was a, uh, a, you know, set, a deal set up in it to where they could, in the deed restrictions, in the deed itself, could not be granted to the, to the county in the future without a one hundred percent of the people there agreeing to it, plus the county agreeing to it. It's the only way it could ever become a county road. So, you got away with people building two and four hundred thousand dollar houses, you don't have to build a road, you don't have to do anything but collect your taxes. But, anyway, I'm really gonna get off into all that. But, uh, it's, I just wanna do it way, I just wanna get back where I need to be. And if I do that, excuse me.
So, I, I had the question of, you have Terra Buena one, and then you have two. So, the swath of land that two forty-nine is gonna come through, does it cut the two in half?
Is it wide now?
No, it's coming through Tierra Buena, too.
It's coming through the second phase? So the first phase is where the houses are, are the one lot that's still?
No.
It's in the second phase, too?
Second phase.
Okay.
It's on, it's on, on two forty-nine?
Yeah, it's gonna be.
So did the lawsuit in, involve the section one?
No.
It only involves section two?
To my understanding.
Okay, so section two is now not gonna be developed?
Correct.
Okay, and this is where two forty-nine is coming through, and this is where you have the injunction where you're not able to sell the property? So, if we non-law suit it, then you'll be able to sell, does that prohibit you from selling to the road, highway, text dock, at the current injunction? Do you understand what I'm saying?
I understand what you're saying. Um, it's a condemnation action, and so you don't have a choice.
It's condemnation?
Yeah.
Okay.
It, it's not really a sale.
Okay.
He could reach an agreement, and maybe somebody could technically make it up here that he, he violated the agreement, but if it's being taken from you?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the county would be, uh, silly to go try to prosecute an enforcement action on basis of a condemnation.
Okay, so it's condemnation, it's not an actual sale?
Well, a lot of people sell short of having gone through, because a condemnation results in a judgment at the end of the day, trial in front of a judge or jury, where the state of Texas gets the property. But most people settle their cases way before the judgment, and they sign a deed.
I think you do.
Right, but it would be silly of us to go in front of Judge Kramer and say, "Judge, Mr. Cook violated this injunction by selling the text dock when he was staring at a condemnation case."
Okay.
Because that's the only way we're getting enforced.
I just wanted clarity on, uh, if he wasn't able to sell?
He's able to.
How does he overcome that?
Well, it's, the injunction, when you have an injunction, and one party or the other is alleged to violated it, the only way it gets enforced is when the other party goes to the judge and tattles.
Okay.
We're not going to tattle on Mr. Cook?
Okay.
That he sold the text dock.
Okay, I just, I just-
I don't have any choice, they told me, I'm the judge.
Right, I was just trying to see if it resulted in a bond?
I understand, I understand, no, no.
Okay.
And, and if, and if you violate an injunction, you're subject to a judge using his discretion, saying, "I'm gonna hold you in contempt." And he can fine you up to five hundred dollars, or put you in jail for up to six months. I can almost assure you that Judge Kramer, even if we were silly enough to go up there with enforcement action, would not do either one of those.
So, Mr. Cook, so subdivision, the second phase, is not gonna happen at all?
No. Not, not even as present form, really.
Okay, so that plat that you filed for the second phase is null and void, is what I hear you're saying?
Null and void, yeah.
It, it, you're trying to make it null and void?
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to make it.
And, and he filed, it was a preliminary, is what he filed.
Preliminary.
We never got to the final.
Oh, okay.
In fact, what happened was, the fight broke out after the preliminary, and the real issue for all developers, and I don't know if you remember the headlines in this case, where the headlines were, the county's beating up on, uh, an older fellow in the county, is what it was about.
(laughing).
And, and never, and never, yeah, that's right, that's fake news if I've ever seen it. And said essentially that, uh, never recognized, I think, the paper, and I love the pieces, but never recognized that Mr. Cook is a developer. I mean, it's not just a, an older fellow trying to sell off his property, he was developing.
Yes.
Uh, and, and he's developed before, and I'm not, I'm not saying anything bad about him for that. I mean, that, it's, uh, but for him, the real cost in this thing that was problematic, I think, and he's never said these words, and he doesn't have to, to install a road that is up to county spec versus a road that you bring to your own spec, there's gonna be a difference, uh, in tens of thousands of dollars. And I suspect he didn't wanna pay that, and that's where the fight broke out, was to say, "I don't believe this fits your sub regs." Uh, because if there was no cost to him, uh, or little cost to him, I don't think there'd been a fight. He'd have gone, he'd already done a preliminary, I, I think he would've done a final. Uh, and so I think it was the issue of the road, because we were in a position to have to say, "You didn't bring the county's road, the road up to county spec, you gotta tear it all out and start over." And I assure you that Mr. Cook didn't wanna do that.
Well, that was the whole thing, it was a different kind of subdivision. I didn't want a county road, or accuse it for a racetrack. It was a small country, private area, where people could come and go, and their kids can play without people racing up and down the road, or a big broad road that, that has no use, other than to get to your, your property, that's all.
And, and I'll say, just for the court, as a general premise, you maintain the ability to require developers, uh, or owners who are cutting their property, and I just generally call them developers, but you have the ability to require them to post a construction bond to bring their private roads up to county spec. Once they do that, you release the bond, you're out of it. But at least they started from a county spec road, such that when, in ten years, or twenty years, or thirty years, when there are potholes the size of Volkswagen Beetles, that you did something to try to prevent that. And I, I hear what Mr. Cook's saying, there's certainly value in saying, "Hey, I don't really wanna have to bring this road up to county spec," and my owners know that. I've disclosed that to them, you know, I, I posted notices here, there, and yonder. The problem is, when those owners sell to the next owners, or those owners sell to the next owners, and you have a guy that's down the road, this happened in the north end, who's on oxygen to live, can't get his oxygen truck up and down the road to bring him oxygen, or the little kids can't get school buses to come and pick them up, and so they gotta walk a mile, or whatever it may be, or people can't get the mail, or you can't get a fire truck, or you can't get law enforcement. All of that great idea that you had twenty years ago, just to have a pig trail that everybody loved, goes away, and guess who faces the brunt of it?
Right.
You do. That's, that's the reasoning. And, and, and we can differ on the theory, or differ on, differ on the philosophy, or differ on, differ on that idea, but that is why the court has taken a different position then to say, "We'll allow anybody and everybody just to have an old dirt road down to a bunch of, uh, subdivided property, 'cause that's what the people of today want." You've seen too many problems from that.
Well, it was all taken care of, and, and the, uh, the owners association, the people had to pay and to keep up the road.
Until they didn't pay, yeah.
They couldn't get the proper.
Until they didn't pay.
And this one, this is my little junkie, old division, like some places. These folks out there have nice houses, they drive Lexuses up and down the road, they will probably pick up their wire through a pothole. But anyway, we can go on about this altogether, we're gonna do away with all of that. It was the idea of to have a private road, where John has an assertion against private roads, and that's his problem.
If we were, as a court, to agree with Mr. Cook's request to, if the proper term is dismissed, or void this lawsuit, is it prejudice us in any other situation or standing that we currently have in the county, or may, may have in the future, that concerns you from a legal standpoint?
No, um, it's entirely a policy issue for you. We, we could go forward, and we could have the trial, and, you know, seldom is it a concern of mine, though it probably should be a greater concern, to recover attorney's fees, 'cause I'm on staff, and I'm not keeping up an hourly bill of what fees we have in this case. Um, I, I'm disappointed that we've had to spend a lot of time on this, but it has been a, you know, I think, a good-faith dispute. Charlie will always see things Charlie's way, and that's okay. Uh, but I will see things my way, and I will be, be legal counsel and representative for the court, and it's the court's decision, not necessarily mine. I, I can tell you, I've seen too many letters to the editor, I've received too many calls from people sitting in the- I, I can tell you, I've seen too many letters to the editor, I've received too many calls from people sitting in the places where you all are, to say, it's your fault that I bought property on a private road that I can't get up and down. It's your fault, I've seen it happen too many times. And it happened, I'm gonna guess, exact, very similar, it started very similarly to how Mr. Cook is saying it ought to start here. You have people that are happy about having private roads, and they're in charge, and they'll be happy to maintain it, and have their HOA dues paid for, that, and to be honest with you, it's a great idea, it's great in theory. But when they stop paying their dues, and nobody's paying any money into that thing, or doesn't have the money to fix a road that's got a washout, that costs tens of thousands of dollars, when you got two thousand dollars in the HOA account, and you got people saying, I ain't paying for all this, I just need to drive ten feet, I'm not paying for a hundred feet. There's lots and lots of issues that creep up, and that become problematic. Um, but to go back to your question, if you were to non-suit, you have the issue of, if there is a statute of limitations that began to run when Mr. Cook engaged in whatever conduct was originally complained of. If we make this suit go away, it's as though, if, if you decide, all of a sudden, you change your mind, hey, no, and we wanna pursue this, we wanna be sure we get a judgment that says we were right, and Mr. Cook was wrong, because we wanna deter other developers from doing this. If you decided to file the suit again, for the conduct that occurred five years ago, we, we have to analyze the statute of limitations issue. Because if that conduct create, was done, and effectively is diagnosed as a tort, most torts have two-year statute of limitations. So, you may only have two years to file your suit. We filed suit as soon as we found out about the issue. If you make it go away now, and we're outside that statute of limitations, it's possible that you're prevented from filing a suit complaining of the conduct that occurred five years ago. So, that's why it's a big step to say, we'll walk away from it. Uh, most of the time, if you voluntarily non-suit the case, you can refile tomorrow, but you gotta be within the statute of limitations. Let me give you a, maybe a better example. If Mr. Cox creates, or, or commits a trespass, and comes onto my property, and damages my property, uh, most of the time, I'll have two years to file a suit against him for that. If I wait two years and one day, I won't be able to sue him, my time's gone. If I file within the two years, but one day I, you know, I think, ah, like, Mr. Cox, I'm gonna make this thing go away, and you make it go away, uh, within the two-year period, and then one day you wake up and say, no, no, I'm really mad at that guy, I'm gonna refile. But now you're two years and one day, your statute of limitations has run, and your new case is gonna be thrown out because you waited too long. So, it has that implication, other than that, there's not any cost or anything, and other than the question of, uh, whether it's for general deterrence, I, I'm not a, believe it or not, Mr. Cook, I'm not a grandstander, and I don't care about maintaining the suit, uh, if it's not appropriate. And if you guys say, it's reasonable to say, put him where he is today, he's got a two-hundred-and-fifty acre tract, there's one piece in the middle, essentially, that he sold off to somebody else, but he meets our exception, he's only divided into two pieces, and one of them's over five acres, in that case, a plat would not be required. Our whole lawsuit was to require him to file a plat, uh, and to bring the road up to county spec. But if that goes away, is there a need for a suit anymore? I don't know, I don't know. I, I don't know what Mr. Cook plans to do with it, I can assure you, he plans to do something with it. And maybe you wanna pin him down and say, what exactly is it you wanna do with it? 'Cause we don't wanna be back here tomorrow with the dispute over what he thinks is a division, what I think is a division, or what you think is a division, where we're filing suit with a different subdivision, different dividing, dividing with different lines, where he says, 'cause he's still telling me he doesn't, he doesn't buy what the judge told him is the reality. And that is, what he was doing violates the subdivision regulations. He's still not believing that. And it's not just my opinion, it happened to be the judge's opinion as well.
Okay, I think we will move into closed session, as we're authorized to do by Section five-five-one.
I heard you.
Point oh-seven-one of the Texas Government Code. So, Mr. Cook, what?
Forty-eight, something like that.
Oh, we can table that till you get some information. Or we can just take no action, and we'll do it anyway, right? Either way, kinda that way, if you table it, usually you can kinda set it there, it's the best of times.
David, did you mark what time we went into executive session? Would you share that with me, please?
I certainly will. I went in at ten fifteen.
Thank you.
I don't know if you can tell me, I said, he wanted to show on the map where Two Forty-Nine is. He's indicated to me that his intention is, if he sells it, to sell it all as one, and not to, not to cut it up. I told him, he wanted, he wanted to show you where that is, and I told him I'd sit this certain, he can show you where Two Forty-Nine is.
That would be fine, and we're back in open session.
Okay, I've hit, uh, this right, goes right across here. And it was right up here, like this.
I'm sorry, I can't see. Can you do that again, we couldn't see.
Okay, I'm, I'm. Right across, right here. Comes right here, goes, right across here, right, right here. Right across the northern park.
Across the northern park.
Right, right across up here. Like a Martha Jones, I think I got it, it was, it comes right across this corner. It comes up here, about like that, it goes out this way.
And Cook, then it straightens out?
Yeah, it goes out, out, it cuts right down right there, and it comes right across here. So, it just cuts right across the, right across the northern park.
Does it affect Mr. Rowan?
Pardon me?
Mr. Rowan, is his name Rowan?
Rotten.
Rotten?
Let's see here, yeah, it comes, yeah, this forty acres of mine, it comes right here, just like this. Here's the road and the subdivision. It'll come like this, right here. But it comes right across here.
Okay, and your plan is?
I don't have any plan of it. What do you mean by plan?
Do you have plans of selling any of this?
Well, let me tell you a story.
Okay.
When I was a little kid, my granddaddy used to cut me out of the pack, and he'd preach to me for hours, it seemed like. And he told me that all, and if I had to get an education, I had to provide for my old age. Now, it looks like I got a good chance of getting old, so I need to do something with all this, and I don't have time to subdivide it.
Okay.
So, if, if I do sell it, it'll be as one, one piece.
Yes, one piece.
And y'all be talking to somebody else, if they decide to sell it.
But, do you think it's, Charlie, you, I don't think there's much chance anybody would buy it till they knew where Two Forty-Nine was laid out, though, right? I wouldn't buy it without knowing how many acres of being condemned.
Well, that's all, that's all I'm talking.
Right, so you, you, but have you finalized the condemnation, I guess is the question? Have you, have you finalized the condemnation?
I haven't, but they, they've got it all laid out, and, and we're talk, they're talking to me, that they have made me an offering.
Okay, so, you realistically expect that you could, if, if you sold, you could sell before the project's built?
For sure.
But that's, that's one of your intentions?
Oh, no, 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 John, I, I just wanna do whatever, I wanna be able to do whatever comes up. I don't have any intentions of selling it right now. I don't have anything, this.
What's the urgency for the court to consider a non-suit today, then?
Well, I suppose it's, it's urgent, but we've had this thing over my head for a long time. So, what you ask?
That's what I asked, yeah, that's what I asked. I, I just seem to me, there must be something on the horizon if they're asking.
Oh, no, 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 no. I don't, I don't have, but I never know what may come up tomorrow. Well, I guess what I wanna do is, is be ready, if something does come up, that I can do something with it.
Okay.
But it won't be, it won't be a subdivision, I tell you, that I will do, now somebody else might. If y'all got a lot of money, you may wanna do something with it.
Other than your, other than your home, and I think your homeless, some of the acres that's attached to it, if I'm not mistaken, right?
Yeah, it is, uh-huh.
Other than your home or your home place, do you have any other acreage in Grange County that, uh, could be surveyed?
I've got a twenty acre tract down on three oh, I mean, yeah, three oh two.
But not anything in a hundred acres or more?
Oh, no.
This is the, this is?
That's all I have, right here, but this, this right here, and this.
That, that, that shows a hundred and sixty acres down, uh, east of Terre Buena Norte?
Yeah.
Is that sold, or you got that?
No, it's, that's just part of the deal I'm talking about, right here. This, and this right here, and this.
Okay, you're saying, when you're saying this is all I got left, you're saying this is part of the thing that you got left?
Yeah, yeah. It's all, there's about four hundred, there are little, between four hundred and four fifty acres and all.
All right, and, and so, Court, I guess to, to add to the discussion, if there, if, if Mr. Cook has indicated to you there's no urgency to act today, and from your perspective, there's no urgency to act today, you need to be sure that you have all of your questions answered, there's no reason to, to run off and make a decision if they're not. And if they, if you have all of your questions answered, it's ultimately gonna be a decision for you as to whether you wanna maintain the suit.
What? Well, of course. I don't see the reason to, to have it hanging over my head, or you guys, I just don't see the point, you did this, here's your job.
Well, and, and I'll tell you, the deal is, Charlie, it's the same example of the purse, and the court has to make the decision that if somebody in their perspective has violated their regs, you file a suit, and if that person runs around and gets everybody that they sold to to give them a deed back, does that fix it? That's really the question. And, and for them, for most of them at least, I think this is the first time they've had to even think about it. How long have you had to think about it?
Not very long.
Ah, come on, you've had years to think about it.
Oh, well.
Commissioner Dobieansky's had a couple of months, but the rest of the folks, I, I dare say, some of them may not even known this suit was hanging out there.
Well, probably not.
So, all I'm saying is, they're in charge of taking care of the county, uh, if today's the first time they've heard about it, and they're being asked to make a suit go away that may never be able to be filed again, it seems to me they may oughta wanna be sure about it.
There won't be anything from me, as far as any, any subdivision is concerned. I will assure you that.
Well, so when, when, if you were to sell as a whole, let me ask you this question, if you were to sell as a whole, how would you sell those pieces that you previously sold to Galloway and Duke Church?
Oh, I bought those back.
Right, but you bought them back in those tracts, right?
Yeah, that's right where the, that's right where the road's going, Two Forty-Nine is.
I understand, but when you say you're gonna sell as a whole, how would you sell them as part of the whole? They're not part of the whole anymore, are they?
Yeah, well, of course, yeah, they are.
Well, Galloway's was twenty-seven, Duke Church's was twenty-seven, Lingels was eleven, Ling, who owns Lingels now?
Who owns what?
Lingels, that eleven, that, the one that's still owned by somebody else, who owns that?
A fellow named Eli Watson.
What's his plan?
He has a house that lives there.
Is he gonna stay there, is it gonna be wiped out by Two Forty-Nine?
No, he's, he's gonna be right off of there, and he'll, he'll use Two Forty-Nine to come and go.
Okay, that was my next question, is he gonna use your private road, or is he gonna use, you wanna use that to?
That's right here, he's right here. And the road's gonna come right, right up from here.
And you've talked with him about that?
Here's that curve that, uh, supposedly.
Illegal curve, yeah, I get. Uh, so, did you, have you talked to this guy about him getting on and off Two Forty-Nine, and he's okay with that?
I did, I talked to him, I, I, it relieved him of that.
Did you originally talk to him about having him convey the property back to you?
I don't think you could buy it back.
You, so you didn't have that conversation with him?
No.
And the other folks, when they conveyed it back to you, is, is it because you asked them to, or how'd that work out?
No, that, that's a strange thing, Tom, I never, I never will understand that. Those people got something in their head that, that that, uh, road going through there was gonna be a detriment to them. And they went, even had a lawyer, they were gonna claim that I knew that road was coming, and I defrauded them. Well, I told them, they sure, sure really not to sell it, because it's gonna be worth a lot more money. But they were, I don't know what they, anyway, they insisted that I buy it back, which I was glad to do. And I'm glad I did.
Sure. Uh, you're gonna have to answer this, you don't want to, did you buy it back for the same thing you sold it for?
Yes, I did.
And did those guys go away with their lawyer, they're not threatening to sue you anymore?
No, 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 that's all history.
All right, what about Rotten? I think he's, he's losing a piece to the, to Two Forty-Nine, right?
Do what?
Blair is losing a piece to Two Forty-Nine, right?
Yeah.
What's his position on what his access is gonna look like?
It cuts right across, he is right across the corner.
Right, and so is he intending to use Two Forty-Nine for access for both sides of his?
Of course, I haven't discussed it with him, but if you're being practical, why would he wanna use, as you call it, my big trail, when you have a paved road running?
Well, that's why I'm asking, is, is it your expectation that he not gonna use your road anymore, the one you built?
No, no.
The one that extends out to the east, to his tract? That's the one up top there? Okay.
That's, I'll be, that's where I'll probably go, my house is right down here.
So, those are your two pieces with the two, the tank here and the tank there?
Here?
Yeah, my, my house is about right here. And but I have a road that comes out through Deer Creek.
Okay.
Where's your house, Charlie? Your house is down here by this?
Right here, yeah. Well, let's see here.
Right there.
That lake is, is, that you're looking at there.
Yeah, this is the one fifteen.
Is about right here. And my house is right here, and I come out this way, down to three oh two.
I got you. That's when you, you and Man Cuso had some fight over this deal done here, right?
Say what?
You and Man Cuso had some fight over that deal years ago, right? Johnny Man Cuso, with this issue about getting in and out of Deer Creek or something?
No.
Okay, I'm glad you brought your point, I appreciate your point.
My point? Well, we called it the floor.
That's all the questions I have, I mean, my question has been answered, I, I, there, at some point, you may not be able to have all the answers as to what Mr. Cook is gonna do with it. Question remains, is some, is there some urgency, or is there even some incentive for you to say, the right thing to do, or the appropriate thing to do for the county, or the people of the county, is to make this suit go away?
Well, what, to what, uh, let me ask you, can I ask you a question?
Sure. Me or them? Cause you say you wanna ask me or them?
You or them, one of that, what is the, what is the purpose of having the lawsuit now, on the books? What could happen to possibly benefit the county?
Well, it's two at least.
Subject to.
There's at least two people currently on those, on those roads, correct?
Do what?
Two people currently using that, that private road.
Yeah, well, one, yeah, well, actually, two, I guess, yeah.
Just one doesn't have a residence, he just has property there, is that correct?
No, one doesn't, and one doesn't. Well, one of them, this is his property, it's not even on this, but he, it's his property, as, as a way, as John explained it to me, he's not, wasn't, wasn't a part of the, of the thing. I had to.
I guess the, the question that, that Commissioner Malice raising is, maybe is, maybe not, I don't think there's any harm in giving these folks an opportunity to talk to those two landowners.
Oh, absolutely.
Before they go dump in a lawsuit.
Absolutely, if you wanna talk to them.
Cause the lawsuit was intended to protect them, right?
I don't know what your lawsuit was intended to do, John.
You're smarter than that, Charlie, you know.
No, I don't.
You may disagree about the validity of it, but you know what?
This is, this is a subdivision that's exactly like this one, right here, that's, it exists today.
And you filed a plat for one of them, either Terre Buena South or North, you filed a plat for one of them?
I do, yeah, I do.
That's right, so you, you knew all about it? Didn't file a plat for this one?
That's right. But I have a plat for this, too.
I know.
For y'all, it, I don't.
Well, I guess my suggestion might be that, since this is the first, some of us is, have. Well, I guess my suggestion might be that, since this is the first, some of us has, have indeed heard about this.
Sure.
Give us a little bit of time to absorb what's been discussed here today. I would like to put this back on the agenda for the May thirty special meeting, and at that time, commissioners, we be prepared to make a decision to, if the correct terminology is unsuit.
Non-suit.
Non-suit, or if we didn't non-suit, we.
Take no action.
Take no action.
And I'll get you the schematic from Texas, I'll get you the latest one they have, so you can see where, we, we can try it over later, see where that two forty-nine's gonna be specifically.
Well, it's a better than that, I'm gonna invite y'all to come out, and we can talk to Jessica, who lives right there, anytime you wanna come out, she's there most of the time.
Okay.
So we are tabling?
We're gonna table this until May the thirtieth, at which time we will do our best to make a final decision for you, Mr. Cook. All right, sir?
Is that a motion to table, or what?
Do we need a motion to table?
You don't need to, it's your rules, you can if you want.
We're gonna table this until May the thirtieth, at which time we'll make a decision.
I'll second that motion to table.
All right. So we have a motion before us, and a sec, by Joe Fouth, we have a second by Commissioner Dobianski, all in favor of tabling? Item number nine, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries, and our target to resolve this, Mr. Cook, will be May the thirtieth of this year.
Do you need me for anything else?
No, so you're.
Just get out, shut up, tell them.
We've appreciated your presence and your information here today.
I appreciate y'all's patience.
And your comments. If anybody wants his number, you may wanna ask him for it now, if you wanna call him, if you wanna meet him on the property, if you wanna get contact information for the other folks.
Absolutely.
Would you, would you share your phone number with us?
I don't know that.
Seven one three, six seven five, six one seven seven.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Cook.
We'll go to agenda item number ten, is there a motion to adjourn? There's a motion to adjourn by Commissioner Dobianski, Commissioner Walker has seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries, we are adjourned.
Don't forget your notebooks.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, two hours, for five minutes.